Thank you, thank you, thank you, brother Paul. A hearty good evening to my PNM brothers and sisters. It's a real pleasure to be here and to see you out in your numbers. I must admit, I must admit, when I saw the rains today, I began to panic. It's like I like to say I does worry like an old woman. Sometimes it's true, it's true. I started to panic and I didn't think we could bring the numbers out in the rain. Because usually when we do this, we would walk the community and tell the people come out. I say, "We didn't get the chance to walk. How we sure these people coming out in the rain?" And our political leader Ansel Dennis say, "Nah, have confidence in the PNM faithful. They would come out, they would come out." So, I thank God for his leadership. And I thank God for his vision. Because in a time like this, steady, sober, sober leadership is critical. And I'm thankful that we have that in Mr. Ansel Dennis. I'm thankful to Mr. Kelvin Morris, who is so called. And engage him in my panic mode too. Dion Bron is somewhere out there. And he said, "Don't worry, we have a strong youth leader. At least go out and give that youth leader the opportunity to speak." On my way here, I heard our youth speaker. And I must say, I am very, very pleased. It's a pleasure to see Boko in the house, Bethel Village in the house, Black Rock, PNM faithfuls from Tobago East and Tobago West. stalwart like Mr. Stanford, Kalender, Troopers, Soldiers, Joel Jack. Everybody in the house is a real, real pleasure to be here this evening with the family, to fellowship with the People's National Movement. I always appreciate an audience who's always willing to listen, to come out, to get the information and to share it with other PNMites, to share it with all of Trinidad and Tobago. Those of you who are listening by social media, by radio, thank you for tuning in. This is the voice of the People's National Movement. Sixty-seven years long, sixty-seven years strong, the same People's National Movement of Dr. Eric Williams. And we are not moved, unbreakable, unshakable. We've won in the past, we've lost in the past, we've learnt. Still loving, still learning, still growing, still walking, still listening. It's a new day, it's a new dawn, new spirit, new blood, new energy comes to the fore. Every single day, the balisee never, ever dies. No matter what they say, no matter what they do, the People's National Movement is on the move. That is what we are, a movement, a party of love, created in love, moving forward in love. When you look around here, we don't get together because we hate the nah, or we hate this one, or we hate that one. They got together because the TOP hate this and the PDP hate this. They got together in hate. And that is why they can't move beyond that hate. To have love for what they're doing, to even have love for one another, to work together. And that is why we are where we are today as Tobagonians. It's unfortunate, because they're missing a golden opportunity. Here we had new faces, young people we went to school with. Yes, they were not for our party, they were not for our beliefs, but we still had hope. That okay, there is a new fresh front. They come, they're saying the right things. We hope that they do the right things. When it's our turn, we lead. When it's not our turn, we stand in the background, we do our homework, and we allow them to go ahead in peace. The PNM never interrupted. We let them lead and they mash it up themselves. My father used to say, "Happy birds does mess in their own nest." So I must say, today we gather as part of a mission. Sixty-seven years, the journey continues, the passion is still there. And we are out in our numbers, willing to work, all of us, for the greater good. In and out of government, we are about national development and about contributing to the greater good for all of Trinidad and Tobago, for our children, our children's children, for the growth and development of Trinidad and Tobago. We are minding our business. Rain, sun, snow, we out here minding our business. We are securing our investment. And the good book, any good book says, and life would teach you, that anything that you work hard to build, you have to work double hard to preserve and protect. Anything that you work hard to build, you have to put things in place to protect. So I hear some PNMites, people saying they vex. And who's saying, "Well, we ain't like where you do this one." And being like, the truth is, at the end of the day, we put this work in over twenty years to build the Tobago Council and to deliver to the people of Tobago. Service and representation and delivery like they had never seen before. Because we had been in opposition for over twenty years. And we built, brick by brick, and as vexed and as sour as some may be, a handful of you, the work continues because we can't turn our back on what we built. We can't turn our back on the promise that we've made, not only to ourselves, all souls. I'm forty-one, but I have little nieces and nephews coming up and they are depending on that promise. They can't make their way to the polls. They unable to even voice what they want or what they look forward to. But we must feel a sense of responsibility to them. How can I turn my back and let jokers like Fali and Friends lead them? And gamble with their future? So as sour as some may want to be, we can't afford that luxury of being sappy. We have work to do. We built a long, strong legacy, a rich one, a robust one, a resilient one, that would bounce back no matter what we go through. It's one of delivery, it's one of representation. Where you could call us anytime of day and night and we do say, "Ease we up." We answer and we respond. That's the People's National Movement. When you could have called on Clarence and he will give you a food card. I'm telling you now, I'm sending constituents to their area representative and they're not even having public day. And they're telling them, "We not doing food cards or we not giving any food support right now." Where do they do that at? Who does that? Who does that? That is inhumane. And then, they go out to deliver food baskets, you're not seeing who they're delivering to. And they're giving us the impression that they're working. Office always closed, never having public day. I'm telling you, we are sending constituents to them and their doors are closed. And they are sending them back to me, all this fixing that they had promised to do. But we are the People's National Movement. And we started out on a journey in nineteen fifty-six to build this nation, to bring all people out of colonization and to build new schools, a new financial system, to what's giving everybody an opportunity and a chance to do better in life, to contribute to the development of the country, to get a piece of the pie for every single body. That is the work that we are about. And we stand committed to that today. We built the schools in this country. And what is happening now is a repeat of what happened then. Because by the time the NAR got into office in nineteen eighty-six, I think it was, we had already built over a hundred schools. And they promised that they would do the same and couldn't been the one. You see, we make the thing look too easy. That is the People's National Movement. Because we came with a clean heart and clean hands to do the work for the people, for all the people, every single creed and race, no matter your political background. And when we give a benefit for the people, it's not only for PNMites, it's for every citizen of this country. That's the People's National Movement. And there are persons today who would go to the deepest hell to try to make you feel like you have done nothing. And they bully you on social media. And when you call in the radio station, the radio station host that used to trample on the PNM, when they end supporting them, they playing there and saying nothing. Everybody cool, everybody quiet. Don't worry, the first time, it was we first time too. It was our first time too. And they gave us many stripes. Why? Why a different yardstick? Why different rules? Why a different course for us? With the People's National Movement, sixty-seven years long, sixty-seven years strong. We don't fight up, we just fight. And when we fight, we fight to win. And we always overcome. So, we cannot be afraid of them. In nineteen ninety-eight, we had never seen leadership in Tobago. Yes, this Tobago House of Assembly created in nineteen eighty, by nineteen ninety-eight, when we created the Tobago Council. It was with that fervent desire and commitment to deliver to Tobago what Tobago deserved. We saw what they were doing and we told ourselves that Tobago deserved better. And our people deserve more. But they wouldn't give us the time of day, so we did our homework. We walked from house to house. We did our homework and we came up with the Tobago Council and delivered it to the people of Tobago. It took us two, three years to be accepted and to gain their trust. And when we assumed duties, for the first time in our history, as leaders in Tobago, we said we're gonna give them development like they never seen before. And it's interesting to see social media folks, some of them nineteen and twenty and twenty-one, them hate the PNM. Yeah? Because that is what was taught to them. And some of them were not born yet. Because if you're twenty, or twenty-one, or nineteen, you know, coming out of sixth form, you're a part of the little youth group and the youth movement, you were not around. You were not even conceptualized or conceived in two thousand and one or in the nineteen nineties, when we know what suffering really was in Tobago. They were not around when there was no GATE. I listened to our youth speaker, I say, "He graduated with his law degree. And he's going here and he's going there." Before the People's National Movement decided to bring GATE, that would have only been a dream. You and your mother would have to sit on home and dream. We created this platform and these measures and these strategies so that everybody, so that I see paperwork, and a fisherman, their child could go to college, could go to university, could see the doors of Uwe and my guy could talk about his college degree. Our parents didn't have that benefit. So it's interesting to watch these young folks cuss us out on social media, but the PNM do nothing. Where were you when there was really nothing? I graduated from Form Five in nineteen ninety-eight, coming out of a family of eight children. It had dollar for dollar at that time. If you don't have a dollar, we don't care where Panda Dollar was coming from. Because you don't have a dollar. But the People's National Movement created GATE. And all of them out there cussing us and saying what they have to say about us. They are graduates of GATE too. That's the kind of boys, that's the kind of grit that they're working with. And we're just not talking about GATE, because prior to GATE, we gave you free education. Right now in the Caribbean, you have people still paying for education. I just came back from Jamaica. And they're saying to us that the government only pays for four subjects, not only a full certificate, only four subjects. The rest you're on your own, you have to run and get support through athletics, or you have to find the money elsewhere. Only four subjects they support. And here we are, children going to school, they could do ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen subjects, they go on to do Cape and so on. And that didn't come just like that. Somebody had to make a political decision, to make education a priority, to build a country on education, to give everybody the opportunity. And for those who didn't have the chance to graduate with five CXEs and advanced, you have CCC, you have MIC. Before you, my brother, when you didn't pass common entrance, you torn school ground pine standard five and standard six and your short pants turned to long pants, it's the People's National Movement that changed that for us. So it's interesting for you, who had not been around when we're rarely gonna have, to be on social media, following Fali and Friends to cuss the PNM. Yes? Where were you when we were going to Trinidad on the slow boat? And when we come off the boat, we used to smell like diesel. It's the People's National Movement that gave us fast ferry for the first time. For the first time. And now we get to the point where we purchased two new ferries and maintained them, the Boko Reef and the APT James. And when we were going to purchase them, the UNC and all of them who in opposition now playing nice, who are in government here in Tobago, playing nice. They thought it was too much money to be spent. And when we went to expand the airport, two point one billion dollars, a promise made to the people of Tobago over thirty years, administration after administration, this PNM government decided to put that into action. And that project is moving along nicely. Where were you thirty years ago? Fish fresh, milk, mother milk still on his face. And you had the nerve to be on the social media, cussing the PNM, telling me we ain't do nothing. Where were you when music festival and all the calypso shows took place in Fairfield Complex? Now we can boast about the show Par Culture on Complex. And they could show, they're living there. They're living there to the point that they tell us we're gonna use it properly. But if with an ability, you couldn't use it. Because the People's National Movement, we don't just think about the next election, it's about the next generation. See, you might cuss us now as we develop and we offer progress, but later on, we all benefit. We all benefit. And we could go on and on and on and on. Where were you when Tobago didn't have one public pool? I was there when Orville Delano London delivered the pool in Black Rock and the pool up at Kendall, open for the public use. Where were you? You go to Pigeon Point every fourth Sunday. You go to Pigeon Point every fourth Sunday to have the young people go there to lime. Where were you when we had to fight the landowners down at Pigeon Point? Because we didn't own the estate. We couldn't access Pigeon Point, we had to ask somebody to open the gate. You remember Ember, Humoimi and them shaking down the man gate? And it is the People's National Movement that when these estates came on the public market for sale, we purchased them. So you have Pigeon Point Heritage Park, you have friendship, the friendship that they're all excited about, that they building the road on, the People's National Movement that brought that into all assets. Pembroke Heritage Park and the list goes on and on, all you ain't born yet, all you're cussing while you don't know. So brothers and sisters, the list goes on and on. And we say, thank God for the People's National Movement, that these children can dream big dreams and access tertiary education, that those who have business ideas could access a business development grant and a BDU built by the Tobago House of Assembly. And a venture capital which helps some of our original businesses that were in trouble over the years. That's the work of the People's National Movement. So don't you forget who you are, where you came from and where we're heading. Because nobody else, show me another party in this country, in Trinidad or in Tobago that can boast of that strong legacy. They met us here, they would leave us here, and we would continue to deliver and represent. Some of them went to Goodwood High, Goodwood Secondary, Space Side High, Mason Hall Secondary, Pentecostal Light and Life. Those were not around before the People's National Movement in Tobago. What school you went to? Bishop's High School, that's fine. But I'm sure there are those of you here who went to Goodwood and Space Side and so on, that's the legacy of the People's National Movement here in Tobago. So we came into power for the first time and we delivered like never, ever before. So, this is about protecting our investment. I remember moving to Bethel Village in nineteen ninety, and we didn't have the basketball court. We didn't have the lit football field. Now in almost every community, you have lights on your football field. You have spanking new community centers. That's the work of the People's National Movement. And you gonna sit there and be silent? Somebody telling you that you've done nothing? PNM people, wake up. Tobagonians, wake up. Fali them could shame me, what have they done? What have they done to stand next to me? You see, you have to be sure about who you are, what you represent, what you stand for, know what you have delivered and know that this don't come by just so. We worked hard over the years. There are times when Orville London himself had to battle with Patrick Manning so that Tobago could get. We fought over the years, so don't you dare sit there and misrepresent us. Don't you dare sit there and make these Facebook bullies silent you. Because when you go into the pro, their profile, half of them nameless and faceless and they have no identity. I'll lay a doppie silent me. You have work to do, you have an investment to protect. We were there for the twenty years, working and toiling and laboring. Supporting Mr. London, supporting Mr. Charles, there are times we fought, there are times... But we were the People's National Movement delivering, developing, giving them service, giving them representation. Whether they were grateful or not, we continue to deliver and we always will. How could you make me shame? How could you make me shame? So brothers and sisters, we moved even to Cove Eco Industrial Park. That's the work of the People's National Movement. We have small factories setting up there. We improved the electricity capacity, where we don't only serve Tobago, we serve areas of Northern Trinidad. Who else? Who else for the People's National Movement? And we're gonna do that for Ansel? We're gonna do that for Mr. Orville London? We're gonna do that for Kelvin Charles? You're gonna do that for me? You're gonna do that for Mr. Kalender? We did that for the people of Tobago, to develop the Tobago economy so that the children who are coming up can have something to look forward to. It's not about wanting the plaudits of people or wanting fame and recognition or glory. It's about delivering, standing firm on that promise, fulfilling our mandate. Started since nineteen fifty-six, we are the People's National Movement. We built that. And we have a duty in and out of government to protect it. Because if you take your eyes off it, they're gonna mash it up, they're gonna sell it. They're gonna give it away and continue to say in your face that you did nothing. It's happening now and I beg you to wake up. Wake up, PNM people, wake up Tobagonians and mind your business. We must not forget, while we bask in the glory of the what we built, we must always remember the why. We are going to go, one day we're gonna go. But you see those, the little ones, the nieces and nephews, the daughters, the sons, the children, the grandchildren, you gonna leave their future up to Fali and Friends? You have your business to mind. Because if you leave it up to them, they get nothing. So the very fact that Ansel promised me fifty, I'm sure we have more than fifty here, that you brave the weather this evening to come out here and to mind your business, I feel fulfilled, my head swell, I feel good. I feel good as a PNMite, because it's about restoring order, it's about restoring decency. It's about human dignity, it's about Tobago dignity, it's about preserving democracy. Preserving democracy is not only about going and voting on election day. It's about giving the people the information so they make an informed decision. And that is where our democracy is being decimated. So yes, you think you're going and vote, say you have a fair chance. But if the information being served to you is pure lies, a whole stage production where today this is the fact, let's say this, somebody go and wrote a whole new script and then you come back and you're saying something different, all of that is destroying your democracy. Because if you're feeding the people with lies, then they don't have the information to make the accurate decision. So, PNMites, it may be, you may tell us, "Well, people don't vote because people don't come out election day." It's not about people coming out election day, that's an old thing. The thing has changed. We live in an information age. And you see, the information that you put out there, it affects whether people decide to get up and go to the polls and what they do when they go to the polls. You have a duty, you are duty bound to manage the information that the electorate receive. And when you hear lie, call it out. Don't laugh with them, don't kikikey with them. All you hear, "Not kicking..." No, 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 don't laugh with them. You have to take that very, very, very serious. That is why the UNC invested in Cambridge Analytica. It was to affect the information being served to you. I want you to understand the power of information and your duty to ensure that the right information gets to the people so that they could make an informed decision to protect and promote democracy. You have a duty, we have work to do. Don't pretend you don't see it when they post it, call them out. Because by the time you hit the road and you put street manager and all this, and area coordinator, the information already out there and the people minds already in the wrong place. They could lie, they could lie. I don't know, I never see lie, so... Yes, I'm telling you, when the UNC was out, they lying, I'm like, okay, that's what they made of. But to see my old people, what Kamala give them to rub their eat and them a liar? It's very, very serious business. And you have a duty to put the right information out there. So yeah, we're the People's National Movement on a business to protect our investment and to protect and preserve our legacy from nineteen fifty-six and to operate in the best interest of the country and in the development of the people. We've won, we've lost, we've learnt. But all that we do, we do in love. And each and every day, we grow and learn, just like we had to grow and learn in the nineteen nineties to come and give them the Tobago Council so that they can accept and trust us. We are at that place again and we are not ashamed. We are at that place again and we are not ashamed. Because they've came and met us here, over twenty, thirty political parties. They leave us right here. Because our intentions are good for all the people of the country. And of course, there'll be selfishness in some places. You can't come for every single person in the organization. Just like when you go to church, you can swear for everybody in the church. So don't let nobody make you feel shame for what any one body do or what any one body say. We know what our mandate is, we know what our policy is, we know who we are and what we stand for. And we had thing to show for it, them and have nothing to show. How could you make me shame? Tobagonians, you asked for change, they went out and they got change. Two years later, you think they happy? You think they happy? Who ain't playing blind, playing deaf? They ain't see nothing, they ain't hear nothing. Yeah? If was the PNM in trouble, they on social media, they typing every day, every minute. When they in trouble, "Oh, the weather is nice today." Or they busy, "They're not doing anything today." Yeah? We have a duty to mind our business. Because then there are those who turn dumb, they lost their tongue. And some of them who mouth so full, eating the food, they can't talk. That's what happening now. I want to know, and some of them just shame, they shame, they shame. Call them out, because if was we, they would have called me out too. Do I know mercy? None. You understand? Because you see the information that's out there? We can't pretend that it's okay, we have a duty. We have a duty. They promised the people jobs. When they went from house to house, it's nothing you could have asked for that they were saying they couldn't give. If you say you want a job, if they say you want a bridge, you want a brace wall, you want a helicopter, you want a house, you want this, they made you think that it could happen and they were gonna make it happen. And the reason why you're gonna get it was because the PNM was wicked. And the PNM seem by their self. Yeah? That is what they made you feel. That is what they made you feel. Anything you asked for, you was getting it. So the people went out and they voted resoundingly, and today, they have nothing. Precious nothing. When they were in opposition, they had all the answers. They had, they were calling the radio station. They were in your face, sending you polls, saying all kinds of things to you about what the government could do and should do and so on, and what the PNM doing wrong and so on. Now they're not answering their phones. They're not showing up in their electoral districts and in their offices. They asking you to ease them up. Where was the ease for us? This is what politics is about. This is what representation is about. This is what delivery and service is all about. Now you're not answering questions, you're not sharing information. And your response to everything is about the PNM, they did that too, so we could do it too. Not this People's National Movement. And you said that you're gonna fix it. Everything you said that you would fix. So we are calling on you, we are depending on you to fix it. Now you make the laws, you break it, you're destroying the environment. You remember how sensitive they were about the environment? They didn't want sandals, because sandals is gonna destroy the environment. You remember when we wanted to build a fire station at that same site in Blackrock? And they said the light are going the turtle eye. I want to know. And then they're just calling on the PDP or whatever they call themselves now. You see them people who call herself independents out there? Where them? Where the independents? Where the independents? Where the environmentalists? Who used to be calling in the radio station and the TV in the morning? Where them? They not concerned about the road being built without environmental clearance? They not concerned about the developments and the clearing of trees and so on? And even the light in the turtle eye, nobody ain't care about that now? Where are you? Where are you? Where's the Tobago Civil Net? Yeah? Where's the Tobago Civil Net who had something to say about everything? Now I'm not bashing anybody, I just want to know why all you're there? We not hearing you. Because when the PNM was in power, you were out and bad for everything. And now you're lost, we can't hear you. Tobago needs you now more than ever, all you independents. Tobago need every single one of you now more than ever. Because you see these little children who are coming up, they can't speak for their self. They are calling on you, independents. And people who were the guardians of democracy and protecting the Tobago House of Assembly. Everybody going to sleep now. They're busy. I'll tell you something. An interesting culture has been developed. Where now, in order to disguise their non-performance and their incompetence, they looking for fight with central government. You see? Because they went and they promised people all kind of impossible thing. And now they can't deliver. So now they trying to act like the central government standing in their way. So they have developed a spirit of confrontation and telling the people lies that the PNM standing in their way and not supporting them and not giving them money. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, they got their allocation. If they're gonna get it, we would have known. You would have hear them. Yes? So how come you don't have money to employ people and to give the small people who you promised these jobs and these contracts nothing? But you're building stage in the sea? Yes? And you're building road, people who are accustomed doing roof, building road. And you bypass your Tobago contractors. What about the young Tobagonians who you promised you would set them up in business? What about the Tobago contractors who are supposed to be paid that you're not paying? What about the business grants for the young entrepreneur who is supposed to be developing jobs so that we wouldn't depend so heavily on the Tobago House of Assembly? Remember how you felt? And you were so passionate about the Tobago House of Assembly hiring too many people? Now you hiring left, right and center in health, in social development and so on. You're not advertising it, no. But we hearing about it. And when we send people to you, you're saying, oh, no, we're not doing that. But you have ten days on, ten days off. You told us that those kinds of jobs don't contribute to development. And now that is what you are doing. Yes? So you don't have the money for real development, but you're doing all kinds of crazy contract, giving it to South and Central Trinidad, and Tobagonians have to suffer. And you trying to shame me? How? How? You understand what I'm saying? I'll tell you the beauty about the Tobago House of Assembly. In central government, when we have to via money from here to there, you have to go back and act the minister of finance, and you have to go back to the parliament and so on. In the Tobago House of Assembly, you manage all your votes online items. You don't have to go back to anybody to ask anybody for any permission. So if you feel not to spend money on a road and you want to put it in business development, you can do so freely without having to answer to anybody. So this is about your choices. And this is about your priority. And this is about whether you think it's important to give somebody a business grant or a job or to take you and the whole crew up to Jamaica to chill. It's about choices. It's about priorities. So don't you tell me that central government didn't send you the money for X. Because you have the liberty, the authority and the autonomy to move money from any one vote to another vote. So you have money to play all fours and line here and through all these short-term feel-good fets. But you don't have money to contribute to real development. That is your choice. And that is your priority. So if the small Tobago contractors suffer, it is because you choose to let them suffer. Right now, you make the rules and you break the rules. You decide who get fired and who get hired, that's all on you. So don't try to square up with the central government on this. We give you the allocation and you spend it on what you think is your priority. That's your choice, Mr. Chief Secretary. So don't look for no bang along with the central government. We not on that, we are a party of love. We about cooperation, not confrontation. From the time... From the time you assume duties as the Tobago House of Assembly or instruction from the Prime Minister, every single minister, to go over there and meet with the representative in your specific area, the secretary, and see how you can cooperate and collaborate with them. We all did our meetings, and we all continue to collaborate. To this day, you have projects by central government still being done in Tobago from public utilities delivering lights and pipeline projects and so improving water capacity and distribution. Booster station at Chauvin, at French Ford and so on. And on Tuesday, Ministry of Public Utilities come back for us to commission Hills Broadham to provide better water service to Tobago East and West. We continue to do our work. We're about cooperation, not confrontation. We ain't looking for no fight. The only place we does fight is in the polls, and I ain't lose there, yeah! So you not getting no fighting up from me. We don't fight up, we just fight at the polls only. Meet me there. Meet me there. So say what you want to say and do what you want, but meet me outside. Yeah? So brothers and sisters, it's about their choices and their priorities. You have Ministry of Agriculture still delivering grants to farmers who are registered with the Tobago House of Assembly. All you have to do is be registered with the Tobago House of Assembly and submit your proposal saying that you're building a modern farm. We just approve another nine grants, and we're looking at another twenty-five grants to be approved. We doing our work? We looking for no fight with you. We about the development of Trinidad and Tobago. Self-help grants, you remember in twenty thirteen when we hit them the twelve nil, they cut off Tobago from self-help grants. Today, Tobagonians are benefiting from self-help grants. From the People's National Movement, we not looking for fight. We're about improving the people and giving them access to opportunities. We talk about refurbishing the golf course down at Mad Galena, making it internationally competitive. Improving the possibilities for Tobago in sport tourism through golf. We refurbished the rooms at Mad Galena, and we are working with the Tobago House of Assembly to improve the coastline. Does that sound like a central government trying to fight with Fali and friends? No. We talk about improved connection to Caracas. You hear them boasting Tobago's now connected directly to Caracas and directly to Barbados. You do that by yourself? Oh. And as the Marriott project moves forward, they're doing the EIA right now, the Environmental Impact Assessment, working hand in hand with central government. That sound like a central government trying to fight the Tobago House of Assembly? We talk about the Marina project. The Marina project would do so much for Tobago in opening up economic activity for people to get jobs to serve these people. Yes? And opening up Tobago to a different level of tourism. Does that sound like a Trinidad government, a Trinidad central government trying to fight with Tobago? But we asked for a meeting and they refused to come to the fore for a meeting. They looking for confrontation. And to tell the people, they promise all the Marina and then deliver no Marina, because we waiting on the THA for a meeting to move forward on this project. Why is the Tobago House of Assembly standing in the way of Tobago's development? We take you to Monson George Pavilion, an arrangement between the Tobago House of Assembly and Udicat. After they won, they stopped the works there and they stopped Udicat from doing the work, saying they don't like the design, the way the design set up, the sun gonna come in the people's face. All right? If the sun gonna come in the people's face, then show us a new design and let's move forward. You don't halt the project and make the people of Monson George suffer and then tell them, Mr. PNM, make them suffer. Goodwood, Goodwood it is. Yes? Take me to the indoor sporting facility, same thing. You see, they thought they could have fully people telling them, well, that's a Ministry of Sport project. Lie. We know very well that is Tobago House of Assembly in collaboration with Udicat. When they came into power, they say, no, they don't like the design, they want to go with something different. Hold on, Udicat, we would call you to a meeting when you ready. Never call Udicat back. Does that sound like a central government standing in the way of THA progress? The Tobago House of Assembly, under this new administration, is halting project that was started by the People's National Movement to try to give the people the impression that the PNM is suffering them. Take me now to... Call somewhere. No, let me take you now to Commonwealth Youth Games. When we won the Commonwealth Youth Games, but I encouraged the TTOC to come to Tobago and get the Tobago House of Assembly on board so we can share the games, both in Trinidad and in Tobago. Joe Mopit came on board one time, it was twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and the Tobago House of Assembly was fully on board. When COVID came, the talk kind of died down. And in June of twenty twenty-two, we said, okay, we're gonna do this thing. In Trinidad and Tobago, we back on board. Called, we had a meeting with Pastor Baines and WASP. Yes, the secretary and assistant secretary. And they were on board, to the point that me and WASP went off to Birmingham together. You see us in pictures? Yes, we took him on the trip. We announced it to all of the world that we hosting. We signed, we brought him down to Trinidad for the signing of the contract and for the meetings. Then I let him be responsible for doing the site visit in Tobago. He led the site visit in Tobago. And then it was interesting on April sixteenth to hear the Chief Secretary say to the people that here is central government planning these games, and the Tobago House of Assembly was never part of the game, none of the plan. Where were you? Look on this Facebook page, you're gonna see Assistant Secretary WASP taking the Commonwealth people all over Tobago, running and jumping and hopping and so on. So I don't want to say the Chief Secretary is a liar, but whoever is responsible, whoever's responsible... Whoever's responsible for updating him and keeping him informed is not serving him the truth. So he's therefore furnishing the public with lies. Yes? So then they want to do this project at Blackrock. They want to do beach volleyball there. Way after the contract was signed, not following the protocol, because there's a process to change the location from Pigeon Point to anywhere else. They go ahead, make an announcement that the venue has changed. I can't side with them with that because I know there's a process based on the contract signed. Yes? But on March fourth, when they said they want to change that location, the first question was, do you have environmental clearance? If you don't, you need to start that process yet. Have you talked to environmentalist and you talked to the people? Can you please do so so that it would be a smooth process? They did not do that. March passed, April passed. Now we in May, back and forth with the Commonwealth Games Federation as it relates to this location. But they're out there trying to give Tobagonians the impression that sham for Kojoo trying to keep back progress. I was the one who said to them and in my letter to the Commonwealth Games Federation that this is an awesome opportunity to show how environmental conservation and development can go hand in hand. However, we needed Tobago House of Assembly to show the CEC, the environmental clearance, so that the CGF, which is the Commonwealth Games Federation, could feel safe that they're not doing anything opposite to the environment. That was April. They waited a whole month to the fact where the CGF said, here now, we can't talk to you because the THA is not giving you a clear word. I wrote for meeting, I wrote for meeting. I called. My calls to Fali went unanswered. My calls to WASP went unanswered. One time, they offered me a meeting, I went to the meeting and it was me at the table alone, they never showed. So I called, I said, I recognize time passing and you're not here. Are you gonna come? They said, well, no, we ain't coming, and emergency came up. And since then, difficulty to get meeting from them. It was only, so you had over a month, two months to submit your CEC clearance. It was only Friday morning that they eventually submitted a CEC application. Stretching out the process, over here, giving people the impression they know what to do because we had been telling them what to do. That sham for Kojoo, trying to stop. You understand what I'm saying? Take me now to Studley. Take me now to Grand Bigoli. Take me now to Grand Bigoli. Brothers and sisters, let's talk about Grand Bigoli and the bridge to be built at Grand Bigoli to take the forty people from one side to the next. Where Grand Bigoli is again? Goodwood, Tobago East. Now on June nine, twenty twenty, Self-help Commission signed a contract with the Tobago House of Assembly to provide to the people of Grand Bigoli a bridge. Yes? A bridge. In November, we delivered the said bridge. Yes? We had problems in implementing the project because it would have changed the water course and the roadway, and we would have to cut into the land of a private resident. So the private resident was living abroad, and we had problems with communication and so on, and getting him to agree. Eventually, he agreed, but then administration changed. Fali and they came into office in twenty twenty-one. Since then, that project has halted. Now last week, at a meeting, the public meeting last week, the resident from Grand, at Monson George, the resident asked about what's happening with the Grand Bigoli project. And Brother Fali, with his misinformed self, said to the guy, um, well, what happening with that project is, um, some money passed with self-help, and we ain't see no bridge. But we are gonna get it done. Trying to spread the same lies and infiltrate the same kind of hatred that brought them into government, telling the people at PNM so wicked that some money passed and so on. No money passed? The agreement was for self-help to purchase the bridge and hand it over to the Tobago House of Assembly and the DIQUE Division to use their own labor in-house to set up the bridge. As simple as that. What money passed you're telling the people about? What lies you're telling the people trying to paint a bad pity of National Self-help Commission? What you doing that for? What you still telling them lies for? You already win the seat, settle down and do the work. Settle down and serve the people. You see, it is one thing to win together and another thing to work together. It's one thing to come together to fight and win the PNM, but at the end of the day, you cannot lead and serve and manage better than the PNM. You have the chance, you have the opportunity. Here you are with the opportunity to fix it and to be nice, to be nicer than the PNM. You're wasting that opportunity. And the sad thing is that two years have passed and Tobago is still at a standstill. Not for non-cooperation from the government, but you looking for confrontation, standing in the way of your own progress and in the progress of the people of Trinidad and Tobago especially. Because these young people, all nice, fresh faces, we know them, we went to school with them. We want to see them excel for the best interest of Tobago. Because when the tide rises, it lifts every boat. Yeah? So they get a little one stint, we want to see them win. We want to see them do good. No lie, we want to see them do good. And they are blowing this opportunity and looking for fight and confrontation and back and all, rather than to move forward. Brothers and sisters... Brothers and sisters, I tell you, don't wait on them. Don't expect any better. Two years in, there is nothing to look forward to, there is no difference to look forward to. Don't expect anything different from them. When people show you who they are the first time, believe them. So yes, I believe that they liar. I believe that they wicked. I believe that they deceitful and deceptive. I believe that they are making the rules and breaking the rules. I believe that they are bypassing whoever they choose. I believe that the decisions they make are based on their priorities. I believe that they're looking for confrontation and not cooperation. We are a love party and we are not about that. Brothers and sisters of the PNM, this is a clarion call to each and every one of you. You put in the work over the years, you must protect that work. You must protect your investment, you must look out for yourself. All that we make it two years. We make it two years. We gonna make it two more. We gonna make it two more years. Our time would come, but in the meantime, we have to do our homework. We have to get back to the ground and listen and walk and talk and love and learn. We need to unite as a party and unite as a people and get the work done. Get the work done. Don't be intimidated. Don't be pushed into a corner by nobody on no fake profile. And don't be intimidated by them, they don't have no clue what they're doing. They sit down there breeding hate. Yes? Telling people more lies and trying to get them to hate us and listening to some senior people who time done pass and all they know is so honest for the PNM. How we can move forward with that? We can't move forward with that. We have our work to do. Let's rally together with one another, let's support Ansel Dennis, support Kelvin Morrison, support Petal Daniel, support every single person who is on this team towards building a better future for Tobago and a better day for all the children and our children.